Good evening, this is ANC 34G special meeting tonight on the Maray application to the BZA for building a sports field at the Episcopal Center for Children. I'm Randy Speck, I'm the Chair of the Commission. I represent ANC 34G03 and that's the area basically between Nebraska and Utah and Broad Branch. I live about blocks from the ECC. And we'll begin tonight, as we usually do, by introducing Commissioners. Chaz, you want to go next?
Sure, I'm Chaz Cadwell, I'm from 34G07, southwest corner of the ANC. Basically between Reno, Military and Nebraska.
Okay, Connie?
Good evening, my name is Connie Chang, I am the Commissioner for 34G05, which is bounded by the east side of Connecticut where the Community Center, well, Blue 44 Community Center up across on Western down Broad Branch Road and then it comes in on Legation, then it goes down between Chevy Chase Parkway and Nevada Avenue to Jocelyn. Nice to be here.
Peter?
Yes, I'm the Commissioner for District 6, which is from the Western Avenue border with Maryland and the Chevy Chase Circle to Military from 41st to the west side of Connecticut and a peninsula to the east where I live. I'm welcome everyone.
John?
My name is John Higgins, I am Commissioner for 02 District. My district runs from Military Road on the south to about Wise Road on the north, from Oregon on the east and to Utah on the west.
And Lisa?
Good evening, everyone, my name is Lisa Gore and I'm the Commissioner for 3G01, which is Hawthorne and Barnaby Woods. And my single member district runs from Western Avenue past Pinehurst Circle, up towards Utah, back towards Pinehurst Tributary around Beach and up Oregon Avenue. Thank you, glad you guys could make it.
Okay, we have six of the seven Commissioners here, I expect Michael Zeldin will join us at a later point and we'll introduce him at that time.
He's here, he's here.
Okay, Michael, you want to introduce yourself?
I'm Michael Zeldin, I represent 3G04, which is from Lafayette over to Tennyson or Upland, one half of Upland and Nebraska, Broad Branch, Utah.
Okay, we have all seven Commissioners here now. As I said, this is a special meeting, but we're going to conduct it in basically the same way we do all of our meetings, our virtual meetings. We will have all of the Commissioners as panelists to begin. And as we go through the meeting, we'll have presentations tonight by ECC Maray and the other party to the BZA proceeding, Friends of the Field. And we will make the panelists, make the presenters for each of those parties panelists as we get to that portion of the meeting. Because we're, the audience, the attendees will not have audio or video, we ask you if you've got comments to please put them in the chat. And if you have questions, please put them in the Q and A. Because that way we can flag them and we can ask questions if we think it's appropriate. As we go through the meeting, I'll describe in further detail the procedures that we're going to follow. But please remember, we are also recording this, this meeting and it will be available on our YouTube website beginning tomorrow probably. Now, as I mentioned, this is a special meeting and there are procedures in our bylaws that apply to a special meeting. This is for the limited purpose of hearing presentations by the parties to the Board of Zoning Adjustments Application and Application Number 20643. That's Maray's proposal to build a sports field at the Episcopal Center for Children. And under our bylaws, no other topic may be acted upon at this meeting except by unanimous consent of the Commissioners at the beginning of the meeting. So I'm first of all going to ask that we adopt the agenda, which had been posted on our website and posted on various listservs that serve our community. There's one modification to the agenda as it was originally posted, which had a different order of the presentations. Tonight, we're going to go with ECC as the first presenter. That will be followed by Maray and then by Friends of the Field. With that modification to the agenda, is there, are there any other changes anyone has? All those in favor of adopting the agenda?
Lisa?
Seven zero, okay. Thank you all. Okay, as I said, really, we're going to focus on the Maray proposal tonight. And the way we're going to handle this first is that Commissioner Higgins and ECC is in Commissioner Higgins' single member district. He is going to give us some background on the application and why we're here today. And then I will talk about the procedures that we're going to follow. And then we'll jump, jump right into the presentations. John, you want to start?
Okay, yes, I have my little script here, Peter. I have it in Word form. So for the purposes.
We should. Thank you, thank you.
Well, our goal tonight is to provide the opportunity for the partners of the ECC Field Proposal to present their proposal in a public forum sponsored by the ANC. Those partners are the Episcopal Center for Children and Maray School. The partners have reached an agreement for converting the open space behind the Episcopal Children's Center to a sports field. Maray has applied to the DC Board of Zoning Adjustment, the BZA, to obtain permission to alter the field based on the DC Residential Zoning Law Exemption for educational organizations. This proposal has generated significant interest in the community, including concerns about zoning exemption, the zoning exemption being sought by the partners. A residence group called Friends of the Field has obtained representation status at the BZA. Friends of the Field's application for party status at the BZA noted that the group, quote, "will appear as an opponent," end quote, to the Maray application for exemption. Representative of Friends of the Field will also permit, that will also present that group's position on the project tonight. So tonight's meeting will facilitate the opportunity for simultaneous presentations by all parties. Briefly, the Episcopal Children's Center is committed to its mission to provide educational and child development assistance to children with significant special ed needs. The center paused its operation as a result of COVID overlaid with a deficiency in funding. While several entities proposed projects for the field that might provide financial stability, ECC declined those offers until Maray School offered to lease the property and converted to a sports field. Both organizations are a mutuality of interest in pursuing educational missions and ECC saw an opportunity to use leasing income to enable long-term financial support. ECC now plans to resume its program but at a somewhat lesser capacity than before. ECC sees this partnership as a way to maintain the field as a beneficial open space, although altered for athletic use. Issues of interest and concern include hydrology and stormwater management, traffic intensity, noise impacts, other aesthetic concerns, and perceptions that such a facility simply is inappropriate in a residential setting. By law, the ANC is authorized to contribute to the regulatory process and the ANC position is given great weight in such proceedings. Tonight's forum will inform the ANC's actions and assist all Commissioners in considering this issue. On March 9th, the BZA will hold a hearing and while Maray, ECC, the ANC and Friends of the Field will have standing as parties to the proceeding, residents may continue to submit letters to the BZA and petition for brief appearances at the hearing. Tonight's meeting is an informational forum. It is not a debate, it is not an advocacy proceeding. No commission action will be taken tonight, nor will any action depend solely on this forum. It is one step in the process. Thus, we trust participants will state their cases or position in an informational way rather than in an adversarial way. So now Randy will outline the procedures for the meeting.
Thank you, John. This is the first of three special meetings that the Commission has planned on the Maray application. And each of the meetings, as John said, will assist the Commission in forming its recommendations to the BZA. In this meeting, we'll hear from the parties. On February 16th, we're having another meeting that will give Commissioners an opportunity to hear from and ask questions of the key district agencies that are responsible for reviewing Maray's applications. Those are the Department of Transportation, which will review Maray's comprehensive transportation review. The Department of Energy and Environment, which will review the stormwater management plans. And DDOT's Urban Forestry Division, which will review Maray's tree preservation plan. All of that will be on February 16th. And then we'll have another meeting on February 24th that will review the Commission's draft resolution advising the BZA of the Commission's position on Maray's application. We expect that the draft of that resolution will be available in advance of the meeting and we will take questions and comments from the community at that point. The Commission's file is present, is positioned with the BZA no later than March 2nd. Parallel with the Commission's presentation of a resolution to the BZA or preparation of that resolution, the ANC is continuing to talk with the parties in an effort to reach an agreement that all, or at least some of the parties, will accept. This meeting will be divided into three parts for presentations by ECC, Maray and Friends of the Field, each of which is a party of the BZA proceeding, as John mentioned. ECC will have 15 minutes to make its presentation. Maray and the Friends Group will each have 20 minutes. The time remaining will be divided, will be displayed on my video. I'll have my phone up so that people can see how much time they have left. And after the presentations by each of the parties, there will be five minutes of questions for ECC Commissioners, from the Commissioners, 20 minutes each for questions to Maray and to the Friends Group. In order to be fair to all of the parties, we will strictly adhere to the times allotted. The parties may divide the time among the presenters and use the time in whatever way they wish. If time permits, we will try to include questions from attendees that are placed in the Q and A. If Commissioners have questions that we don't get to tonight, we may pose those questions to the parties and ask for written responses. We ask all of the parties' representatives to mute themselves during the other parties' presentations. We have invited and encouraged the parties to supplement their presentations tonight with whatever written submissions they wish to make. In order to make, take these submissions into account in the Commission's resolution, we ask that they give them to the Commission no later than February 22nd or two days before our meeting on February 24th. Okay, and with that, I think we're ready to begin the presentations. And Lisa, if you could make Stephanie Nash, Bill Simons and Amy Niallberger, Niburger, panelists, we can begin with them. And you can make the other presenters, panelists at any time you want to ahead of the presentation, if you want. And then we'll just leave everybody on as a panelist through the end of the meeting.
Randy, can all of those folks that you just called out, raise your hand? I just promoted one.
That would be a good thing.
Yeah.
And if your name, please make sure that your name is accurately displayed as on the participants list too. That would be helpful.
Randy?
Yes?
If you don't mind, I would prefer if ECC, only ECC people were up on the screen now and then keep them on the screen and then when Maray presents and they come on, because otherwise, there's just too many people and I don't know who's who.
Okay, that's fine. We can just begin with them. Yeah, and I think Amy needs to be made a co-host so that she can share her screens too.
Yes, I have our presentation. It's not allowing me to share.
I think they're working on that now, I think.
Did I get everyone?
Yes.
I don't see.
Bill was having, Bill was having some trouble and was connecting by phone at one point. Amy, did you hear from him?
I have not heard him.
I see him, I see him on, oh, thank you, Bill Simons, I see him.
I do too.
He's like the third one or.
Thank you.
Just a few down listed, so.
He still can't share.
Bill Simons.
Yeah.
Okay.
I still can't share.
Amy, are you able to share a screen?
Nope, it says host disabled, participant screen sharing.
Well, let's see.
I mean, I can email our presentation to someone.
No, that's good, you can be able to do it now, can you do it now?
Ah, here we go.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you, Randy, Commissioner Speck.
Thank you, let me just move to present.
You're not going to be able to see the time, timekeeping, but I'll let you know when your 15 minutes is up, okay?
Thank you, Commissioner.
Can you see the presentation now?
Yes, I can.
Okay, all right, Stephanie, you're, you're good to go.
Thank you, Amy. I want to say at the onset, thank you Commissioner Higgins for that summary. I think you stole some of our thunder. Thank you so much for that comprehensive summary and thank you Commissioner Speck for those guidelines. I want to just take a quick bit, I know that I've introduced myself before, but my name is Stephanie Nash. I've been at the Episcopal Center for, going into my 31st year now. I started as a clinician and have continued as an administrator. And it's really been my heart and my joy to be at the Episcopal Center. People ask how and why I've been there so long, that's why. The mission's incredibly important to me. We have some very rich history and I'm wondering, Amy, if you could move to the next slide. We've talked about the history at the Episcopal Center, but I really just wanted to pull out a couple additional sort of facts, if you will. We've been serving children for 128 years. We haven't been at the center at the location where we are now for that full 128 years, but almost. We started in Colonial Beach in 1894. That's in Virginia and there was, that's kind of where our name started, with the home for Episcopalian women for DC, we're serving underprivileged children. That was our infancy, that was our beginning. And we came to Anacostia, but housing needs got too big and they needed more space. And so we became incorporated in 1908 in the district. And then our name was the Episcopal Home for Children. But because of generous donors and so forth, we were actually able to transition to Chevy Chase, which is where we are now. We actually moved there in 1929, but the buildings that you see now were constructed in 1930. We started as an orphanage, as I had mentioned perhaps, and then we took a pause in 1957, a little bit similar to even now, to sort of revision and take a look at what would be the best next step. And it was at that point that the board decided that we would begin looking at a study and looking to determine to do what we've started now. And that's working with emotionally challenged children. We started though as a residential piece. And what was interesting about that is while we were residential, we were only five days a week. So children were able to go home on weekends. And we thought that was a very unique approach. And we did that for quite some time until in 1959, we transitioned more to just, after 1959, we transitioned more to just having a full day program at the Episcopal Center for Children. Amy, could you go to the next slide? Enabling success, I'm smiling because I'm looking at that picture. While that was a little bit before my time, what was important to us was creating normalcy for children, having opportunities for, in this particular scene, you can see that the children were celebrating Halloween at that time, but it was important to us then, more recently and continuing in the future, that we model what goes on for children in their communities. They may be taken away from their communities in the sense that their school is not in their neighborhood, but having activities that they can relate to and connect to is important to us. There's also a picture there with a student, actually, who was with their teacher playing piano. We had a very strong music program and arts program that we incorporated for children as well. Again, yes, they're there for their clinical services and for their education, but it was really very important to us to be able to incorporate, as I say, these normacy activities, create creativity, movement. And so this little quote that you see here represents actually a student who was, I think that was taken from our Facebook page, actually, is that not so, Amy? I think so, I don't know if Amy can speak. I went to, she speaks about that, she went to the school and loved it. At that point, it was the overnight program, so she was an example of a student who was there from that Monday through Friday piece and mentioned their teachers, of course. And this particular student has moved on to college and master's work. And that's indicative too of the Episcopal Center, that while sometimes there were children who had what we would call a lateral move, they'd be leaving the Episcopal Center and going to a school like the Episcopal Center for their high school or if they were younger to their middle school. But when they, at that time would age out, they would need to go to a school that might continue their services. But there was also students who were able to be mainstreamed and were able to transition to their neighborhood school or to a general ed setting. And this particular student to go on to graduate and even postgraduate work. So we're really very pleased at the very beginning that happens at the Episcopal Center. And it's our belief that if we can address and work with children at a young age, we can then be able to pivot them so that they won't need to continue in a school like the Episcopal Center, but move on to more of a general ed setting or something they might feel is more challenging. Amy? Thank you. This particular slide, I remember this fondly, this was actually a year, probably just before, actually, we took our pause, our closing operations. We had a career day and what you see there is a firefighter and the students were trying, well, actually, this particular one is not the firefighter, that was a different career opportunity. But you see the student was trying on the, it looks like it's army gear. We did have firefighter, we had folks from the government, actually Board Four came and represented. We had teachers, we had attorneys, it was really quite impressive. And this particular picture was taken on that day. And again, looking, striving for opportunities and activities that children could participate in beyond their academics and expose them to perhaps something that they had not realized. Ask questions, consider, dream, that was our mission and will continue to be. Amy? You know what, Amy, if you could back up just one second, I wanted to say one thing. That particular slide spoke about the individual education for children with emotional disabilities. I think I might, it would be important, just, I've had some questions about what does that really mean? Emotional disabilities? Who, what is a child, what might they be diagnosed with? What is the profile, if you will, for a student at the Episcopal Center? Classically, many of the students had ADHD, many had oppositional defiant behavior. But what, what we began to see more is the trauma profile for some of the children, that indeed, even at their young age, the exposure that they had, some of the trauma experiences that they, that they had, really took a different approach that we had to take. We had to learn and grow about how to address in a trauma-informed way for students and infuse that throughout our whole programming. So the student that had trauma history was an additional sort of piece that came, started to see that more probably officially, probably about five to 10 years ago. But indeed, trauma was there all along, but I think our understanding of it and our way of working with students began to be more realized. We also had students with mood disorder, depression, often multiple diagnoses. And for that reason, sometime multiple medications that they had to take. We had a psychiatrist onboard. At that time, it was felt that it was easier to have a prescriber in, at the school in a consulting way so that students and their families could streamline that particular thing instead of going and having to miss school perhaps, to go to a doctor's appointment to meet with their psychiatrist. We were able to do that in-house. Thank you, Amy, I'm sorry I rushed you to the other one. And just a quick bit again about our profile of the students that we served. You've heard me talk about that primarily DC students we served, but we did work also with students in Virginia and in Maryland. You see here, it's mentioned, this was just before our closing that we took some of these stats. So we're looking at about 2019 for these stats, 84% of the students from DC and the remaining 16% from Virginia. And then we had some Maryland students, particularly Montgomery County. At the time, we did not have any PG County, but we aspire that we will when we reopen. Our students were primarily children of color, 88% were African-American, 9% Latinx or Hispanic Latino and 3% white. That would vary, but that's by and large, as I said, a 2019, 2018, what our profile of students look like in terms of the demographic. Many of our students, as you see, 91% would have qualified for free lunch under government guidelines. However, we did provide a full lunch and I might add, I missed those full lunches. We had a chef on campus and we provided lunch for children and also breakfast and often, well, if it wasn't in class, we had an afternoon snack also. It's really important to embed and infuse food throughout the program and not in a way that you think about classic, like a token economy. I'm not talking about that, but more about nurturance and fostering meals and what that looked like, the conversation that takes place, the community, the connections, I should say, that took place when we would connect around meals. So that was a very important part of the program as well.
Definitely, there are four minutes left.
Okay, let me scoot, let me scoot. You see these, thank you, Commissioner. You see the challenges there, I mentioned that earlier, those are the numbers. Why don't we move Amy to the next slide? This is important. ECC's existence. You've heard us talk about that there were other non-public schools at the same time that were forced to close when ECC did. The very different thing about it is that we owned our land. That's been an important piece to us, that by owning our land, we had a bit more leverage, a bit more say in terms of how and what we would like to see happen, which is largely what happened with our determination and decision-making from Maray School. Our budget at that time is and still would be determined by the AC and it did not cover our rates in full. So we always were operating on a deficit, but weren't willing to compromise the services that we were offering students. So to offset, we really felt like that's why we needed to take the pause and we look at next steps. Next slide, Amy, I'll try to move swiftly. There's only one other program likened to the ECC in DC. It happens to be the Kennedy School, slightly different population, but the closest that I know of. Otherwise, all the students at this point are in Maryland and Virginia. We're talking an hour plus, one way for students, the transportation there and back. It certainly is compromising, not just for students, but for parents to be involved in their students' educational program when they're not in their communities. And so that's been, it was difficult at the ECC, but in DC, we were able to make and provide transportation support for families. I'm not sure if other jurisdictions can do that. The same goes for our employees, we're thinking about employees that are traveling now to other jurisdictions as well, instead of being able to work and address employment and meet their family needs here in the city. Okay, we're empty now. You've seen that, we've talked about it. We've never been interested in selling our program, our real estate, believing that is our commodity. That is something that's been able to help us stay afloat. And it is what we plan to leverage so that we can continue to serve children. The Maray Partnership allows us sustainable income to do that, reliable income to do that. And doing so with a school that we feel is like-minded, a school that's also addressing educational needs for students. So it's been our pleasure to have this beginning partnership with Maray in this opportunity to hear and talk with neighbors and folks in the community to make this the best possible partnership that we can. Amy? In this opportunity to hear and talk with neighbors and folks in the community to make this, uh, the best possible partnership that we can. Amy?
One minute left.
Change is coming. Um, this is quick. This is a, this is picture of Jack. Jack was our ECC dog. Uh, we actually had, uh, some certification for him. He visited classrooms. He joined our staff meetings. Uh, students, um, it really gave them an opportunity again for that normalcy. We had, uh, dogs that visited the program too, but Jack was our resident. Uh, pup. He is still with one of the staff members now. Uh, we do intend to reopen. We do attend to look up, but look up to a smaller program. Uh, we'd be working with K through six. Uh, still working with children with emotional disabilities. The gap is huge. And we plan to, um, also have an after-school program for the neighborhood and we're looking forward to it. So we're looking up. And we're looking forward and I appreciate the time to talk about ECC. Thank you all.
Thank, thank you, Stephanie.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll now have, uh, a period of five minutes for any questions that Commissioners have for ECC. Commissioners, Michael? Michael?
Commissioners Eldon?
You're muted. Sorry, it wouldn't, it wouldn't unmute. So, uh, the only question I have, Stephanie, to start is. When you reopen, wha- what do you expect over the next? Three years to be the number of students that you will be able to serve?
Thank you, Commissioners Eldon. Uh, we're, we're starting smaller. When I say smaller, when we ended, we were about at forty-three, forty-five. Uh, we'd be coming back to start hopefully with building to twenty, twenty-five. I make, uh, I, I'm very clear, we're not going to open our doors and see twenty children right away. The referral, um, process is lengthy. It involves other jurisdictions. It's not going to be right away. But I envision that we would have twenty to twenty-five in build each year to the point that we might get to about thirty or thirty-five. We're not looking to be quite as big. We have, um, the belief that starting small and starting for success would be the best approach. And as I say, it's not guaranteed that as soon as we open the door, we have those twenty students. Uh, but I'm working with the jurisdictions now and they're aware of, of what our intent is. And we hope that the gap that's been there, uh, is going to serve us well. And the students that have been, some of them in other schools may transition back to being served here in DC.
And of the students that you get, how many? Oh, in your past and what will your future be in terms of students who DC public schools? Couldn't serve and therefore you were sort of the. Placement of last resort for many families.
So your question then, um, Commissioner Eldon, I'm sorry, I didn't.
How, how many of your students over the years have been placed with ECC because DC public schools? Couldn't accommodate the needs that these children had?
Well, as I was saying, most of our students, eighty-four percent even, were from DC and that's exactly how and why they came. They could, they had IEPs, all our students do, but they were not able to be met in their general ed setting. So let's say for instance, if a student went to Lafayette and they, they're, um, they have a special educational wing at Lafayette. But perhaps the behaviors were such that or the intensity of that student could not be met. And that's how they would go through the system and be referred to ECC. So almost all the students, that's how they got there. Um, and because we primarily had DC students, I would say quite a bit, and that's exactly who and the type of student we'd be looking at.
And i- if you look on like an autism scale, are you serving a lot of, sort of like level three autistic kids? How, how, what, what's the, the, the level of severity of the students' disabilities that you?
Um, what would, what the original classification was called severely emotionally disturbed was the older term. Now it's just emotional disabilities and we have a COA, what is considered the certificate of approval. Uh, situation that works out with the city, with the Ossi and with DC. And it certifies you to have certain disability, students with certain disabilities. We, if you're, if the student had a primary disability of autism, they did, we did not have our COA to address students with primary. Autism, but we did work with students if they were on the spectrum or if that was not their primary, but secondary or below, if you will. If that was the way, had some presentation or difficulties that way, but we would, would need to refer another student to a different school. If their primary diagnosis was autism.
Thank you.
You're welcome, Commissioner.
Uh, Stephanie, can you please, uh, describe your plans or your thinking about the after-school neighborhood program? Can you elaborate on that?
Yes, I can. Um, we had taken a couple of surveys, um, gosh, it seems forever ago now, but pre-pandemic and even with the pandemic. To get just an idea about a needs assessment first, uh, Commissioner Chang. And what we found is that there were families across age groups, but particularly hovering around the six, seven, eight. What would be considered like a latency age ch- child, would, that feeling like there were waiting lists. Um, at the Lafayette at that time, again, we're a little bit in the mix of, there wasn't after-school programming going on. But when we were doing this, people were concerned about the, um, uh, the, the, the waiting list that were involved. And there's also a program over there at Presbyterian, um, that folks would also had some waiting lists. So our thinking and our plan after we did this need survey is that many of the students that attended Lafayette would go, um, till about. Three thirty, almost four o'clock where they would do what was considered a specialized activity after school. But then that was the end of that and they didn't have aftercare. And many of them would walk to another program, the Presbyterian program I was talking about. But we envisioned that we would be going and picking up students where, you know, it's stone's throw away. So we'd be picking up students and they would be at the Episcopal Center for more of, um, uh, after-school general program, if you will. Lots of arts and crafts, music, not necessarily specialty-based. Um, and they would be at the center until six, six fifteen and we would have a multitude of activities that we'd offer. And so that would be something we would do that someone could come right after school or after their special. At Lafayette in particular, uh, we had some responses, some from Blessed Sacrament also and some of the other neighborhood schools. But by and large, all the students, um, from the survey, survey were from Lafayette. So we believe that having a program that the neighborhood children can be a part of would be a plus. And we had not been able to do that before and we're pretty excited at the opportunity to do that. And we have the facility and the, um, structure to do so. So we're really excited, um, to add on that possibility.
A very quick follow-on. How many kids do you think would, uh, you would be able to accommodate for after-school?
Um, we have, we have the space for more. I mean, it might really be a matter, you know, we've really had some challenges. Commissioner Chang, in the middle of this pandemic, because we haven't been able to really do the same kind of assessment with looking at what's going on. At Lafayette and poll neighbors again about that, but I'm thinking similar to our day program, that it might be about twenty. Possibly twenty-five students. We did our first budgeting with that number of students in mind.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, our, Peter, our time has expired.
That's fine, that's fine. Go ahead.
Okay, all right. Okay, we do want to stick close to the time limits. Okay, if we can now go, uh, Lisa, if you could, uh. Make panelists for the Maray presenters. And, and it would be helpful if you can raise your hand, uh, Marjo Talbot, Trey Holloway. Jamie Milanovich. Paul Tummens. And Carolyn Law, who will be sharing her screen.
Okay, give me one second folks.
Okay.
Peter, your hand is still raised.
Oh, I just lowered it for it.
Um.
Randy, you might have to switch. I can't switch out the co-hosts on this panel, so you might have to do that.
Okay, I, you, make Amy not a co-host anymore.
Right.
Okay, I've done that.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for raising your hand. Definitely makes it easier. Okay, I think I got everybody, Randy.
All right. Just one second before I get the timer going. This is a low-tech operation here. Okay, uh, I assume Marjo will go first. Marjo, you ready?
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Okay, you ready?
Um, yeah.
Your, your, uh, present, your entire presentation was tw- twenty minutes and I'll warn you about four minutes and about one minute, okay?
Okay, thank you so much. Because there's so much ground to cover tonight, I promise to be brief. But as Maray's head of school for the past twenty-eight years, I feel it's important for you to hear directly from me and not just our project team. The plan to create a multipurpose playing field in Baseball Diamond at ECC is critically important to Maray and its mission. In support of our student athletes and our commitment to the education of the whole student. As Stephanie so thoughtfully shared, it is also critically important to ECC. Maray is profoundly grateful for the partnership that our two institutions have forged. We look forward to working together to benefit generations of district children in the years to come. I want to say that both ECC and Maray have tried to be totally transparent and clear of our, um, plans and expectations. Starting back in December, um, of twenty twenty. And through the spring, once we had signed a lease, we reached out to both the council members in Ward Three and Four and the ANC. And then also put in our notices in various listservs and in other ways and times. We presented in the September, uh, ANC meeting, our initial plans. And have been working really hard since then to work with our neighbors and make sure that we are really clear of our commitment. From the beginning, all of our planning has taken place with the understanding that the proposed athletic field in Baseball Diamond will become a part of a community that's made up of neighbors. Some of whom have lived near ECC for many, many years. This is why I wanted to state again that Maray is committed to being a good neighbor. And consistent with the living example we set at Woodley Park Campus. It's not just in our interest to be good neighbors, it's in our ethos. It's part of our mission. By bringing the ANC and surrounding property order or, um, owners into the design process. We have been able to improve the project to reflect community concerns. We remain open to a collaboration with all stakeholders and are willing to make appropriate changes when possible. We are thankful for the thoughtful involvement of many of the surrounding neighbors as well as other families in Ward Three and Four. And thank you Commissioners for engaging with us throughout this planning effort. Trey Holloway will speak next as his Assistant Head for Finance and Operations. Then our traffic expert, Jamie Milanovich, will speak and then Paul Tummens. We want to thank you again. Next slide, please. Trey, it's your turn.
All right. Thank you, Marjo. Um, Carolyn, we can move to the next slide. So our deck's going to get posted to our website. So you'll be able to read, uh, these things in, in greater detail. But what I just want to point out here is that we've made a big effort to, um, make changes to our plan. The red rep- is here is representative of some of the changes that we've made to our plan. Since we began community engagement back in the fall. And we'll take a look at some of them in the next two slides here. So, um, I want to point out that the, one of the big things we've done is we've worked to move structures to the interior of the site. Trash, uh, collection receptacles, batting cages, storage structures, the rain garden. We've tried as best we can to move those away from neighbor homes. That's a big change that we've made. It's pointed out in this slide and there are a few other things that you can, um, read at your leisure. Next slide. You'll hear more from me in a minute on hours of usage, um, but we have reduced the amount of usage that we're proposing for the site. We've reduced it to amount of time that we think is appropriate for the site and it's not dissimilar to what you see, it feels around the city. Safety is also something that we know, um, is important to neighbors, particularly pedestrian safety. Jamie's going to discuss our operations management plan, but as a quick preview, we, um, plan on implementing infrastructure changes to make the site and the surrounding area more safe for pedestrians. So we've got a file where video pulled up here. Um, as we approach the field, we'll kind of swing to the east. And that'll give you a view of a heritage tree that's going to remain in place as well as, um, the retaining walls that are constructed to help us level the field. As well as, um, protect that heritage tree. So Carolyn, you can go ahead and start the video. All along the site, um, we've proposed a landscape buffer of trees and bushes, um, that vary in their density depending on which part of the field you're at. At the corner of Utah and the Rittenhouse alleys where those intersect, we've proposed to transplant three heritage trees. Um, there'll be nine thousand feet, uh, nine thousand square feet of grass that would be accessible to the community up in that corner. And so we want to, um, just give you this quick preview and that's a quick look at the field. This is posted to our website. So you can go there and take a look at it as well as some three hundred and sixty-degree panoramic views from different places around the field. So these are our usage charts, um, that we are proposing for the field. I want to orient you to them, um, quickly. Again, these are posted to our website. So you can take a look in more detail. But the green represents, um, Maray program time for our athletic program. The yellow represents time that we are proposing for the field to be subleased to youth sports organizations. And that hybrid in yellow and green is what we would propose for Maray Games on Saturdays. And when it's not in use for Maray Games, that the field would be subleased to youth sports organizations. The gray represents time that we had previously proposed as program time, either for Maray or for youth sports. So that gray, along with the white, is now time during which nothing is proposed, um, for the field. We also want to note that during the school year, during the week, we may ultimately permit, uh, permit schools such as ECC or DCPS schools to use the field. And all of this usage is substantially similar to what we showed the community in December. But I do want to note that, um, Carolyn, if you could go back one slide real quick. Um, that we did add thirty minutes on Sunday to the youth sports time. Uh, we did get feedback that it would be helpful to have a little bit of extra time in there for changeovers from like a first game to a second game. So we did add some time there. Um, we did that in the fall and the spring usage. We also added six PM to seven PM for youth sports in the fall. So that yellow there during the week. Um, but other than that, this is the same usage that was shown to the community in December. So we'll move quickly through the other season. So in the winter, you'll see that there's little in the way of program time other than during the week. Um, starting at four PM after school and going until dark, which is generally about five or five-thirty. The spring usage looks just like the fall usage. They mirror each other in terms of what we're proposing. And then in the summer, we're proposing for youth sports camps that would run nine AM to three PM during the week. Um, this would give kids and parents the opportunity to have a local neighborhood option for a camp. And then on Saturdays, we would propose some, um, youth sports time. And then in preseason, which is mid-August to Labor Day, we are proposing for our teams to be able to spend a few weeks preparing for their seasons. Going from eight AM to, uh, six PM. So these next few charts are a different way to visually represent the usage of the field. I will say quickly that the striped areas are previously proposed program time and the white area is that field open time. So together, they make up the total field open time. So in this chart, sixty-four percent of what we're calling the daylight hours are currently unprogrammed time. Those daylight hours we're defining at eight AM to seven PM across the totality of the entire year. Knowing that sometimes the day goes longer, um, than that and sometimes shorter. So we have that for the full year, the academic year, and then also just for the summer. To show you the percentages of time. So by and large, um, in the summer, it's fifty-six percent of the time the field is currently designated to be open. But, um, in the academic year and the full year, that gets north of sixty-five percent. Go to the next slide. So conditions of approval. What we've done here is we've put these all kind of in one place for you all. We ultimately hope to have an agreement with the ANC, should the ANC decide, um. To approve, um, to support the project that would cover these conditions of approval that would be memorialized in our BZA, um, order. I want to make really clear. I want to make really clear that again, Murray is not proposing any lights on the field other than downlit security lights and no amplified sound. So no public address system, no amplified music. The only noise that we are talking about would be two shot clocks for lacrosse games and the occasional whistle. I touched on a few of these earlier, but again, everything's in one place for you, but use by school groups, some, some security around the facility when it's not in for scheduled use and when it's dark. And again, you see the number of 48 parking spaces that are there. And then when it comes to construction management, we hope to have some, a proposal or an agreement with the ANC on hours of construction and a key project point of contact, doing surveys for the neighbors on 28th Street before we do construction. That way, we know what to expect. The neighborhood knows what to expect when we come in and do our construction. I'm going to turn it over to Jamie Milanovic now from Wells and Associates, who's been working with us on traffic.
Great. Thank you, Trey. Carolyn, if we could go to the next slide, please. And so two topics I wanted to cover this evening. One is the anticipated trip generation for the ball fields. We've had a lot of questions in past meetings about that. And then I also wanted to cover our proposed recommendations to mitigate the traffic impact of the project. Next slide. In terms of the trip generation, we studied two time periods. The first is the weekday PM peak hour. And the trip generation for that time period takes into account a day when you have a typical Murray game with spectators. That would include a soccer, lacrosse, or baseball game, followed by an outside user using the fields at the conclusion of the Murray game. We also then looked at a Saturday peak hour analysis and the trip generation for that time period included back-to-back youth sports games on a Saturday. Next slide. This chart shows the resulting trip generation. The set of columns on the left represents the PM peak hour vehicular trip generation. The column on the right, the, I'm sorry, the columns on the right represent the Saturday peak hour. And you can see line by line how we've broken down the trips associated with outside users and then the trips associated with Murray and the bottom totals those up, you know, in total for the peak hours. Carolyn, if you could advance five slides, I have some more details about how we took into account those trips, but in the interest of time, I'll sort of leave that for the Q and A if you want to go into that level of detail. So once we have the trip generation established, we then distribute those trips to the roadway network and through, in this case, our four study intersections, which you can see here. We then compare future conditions without the ball fields to future conditions with the ball fields. And that comparison allows us to identify locations where we have impacts that we need to mitigate. Next slide. So at the intersection of Nebraska Avenue and Utah Avenue, we are recommending to increase the cycle length. That's the signal timing at that intersection to better accommodate the volume of traffic. That change would improve the PM peak hour levels of service compared to even existing conditions. And I would note the cycle length at that intersection in the PM is currently 50 seconds, which is very, very low. For urban conditions, it's typically recommended to have a cycle length between 60 and 90 seconds. And the prevailing cycle lengths in DC generally are 100 to 120 cycle length, 120 second cycle length. So the 50 seconds is unusually low. And what our analysis found is that it's not even adequate to handle the existing volume of traffic. So we are going to recommend increasing that cycle length. Next slide, please. We did identify an impact at the intersection of Military Road and 27th Street. We are required by DDOT to outline improvements that would be required to mitigate the vehicular traffic impacts. And so our analysis found that removing parking on the southbound approach of the intersection, that's along 27th Street, during the PM and Saturday peaks, as well as removing parking on the eastbound approach of Military Road on Saturday to create additional travel lanes would offset or mitigate that impact. However, we know that removing parking is not always a popular position. We also know that creating additional travel lanes for vehicles can sometimes have a detrimental effect on pedestrians and bicycles. And so in that case, what we do is look at providing non-auto infrastructure or safety improvements. And the idea there is that it not only encourages people coming to and from the ball fields to use non-auto modes of transportation, biking, walking, but also encourages other folks in the neighborhood to do the same and ultimately reduces the number of vehicle trips in the study area. Next slide, please. So what do those non-auto infrastructure and safety improvements look like? This slide shows things that we're considering. We are still working with DDOT to finalize our transportation mitigation package. We also want to get feedback from the community before we finalize that. So nothing here is set in stone, but this is our current thinking. And this is reflected in our traffic study that was submitted a week or so ago. One of the items is a Capital Bike Share Station. We know that DDOT is keen on this because they've identified this location as a high priority location for a Capital Bike Share Station. We are providing bike racks on site to encourage biking to the site. We're providing a bus zone on Nebraska Avenue so that Murray teams and visiting school teams can transport their students by bus rather than in individual vehicles. And then we're looking at curb extensions at the intersection of Utah and Nebraska Avenue. Next slide, please. This just shows a few examples of what those curb extensions could look like for those who may not be familiar with the terminology. Next slide.
Four minutes left.
Thank you. Curb extensions are a known significant pedestrian safety feature. The benefits of curb extensions are that they increase visibility of pedestrians. They shorten the crossing distance across the street for pedestrians. They reduce vehicular turning speeds. They can decrease illegal parking that encroaches on crosswalks. And it also increases the public streetscape space and space for pedestrians. Next slide. As Trey mentioned, we are proposing a transportation management plan. In the interest of time, I'm not going to read the slide. I've talked about this at previous meetings, but we do have provisions to get students on the Murray and visiting teams to the site by bus. Next slide. And we also have a set of strategies that deal with how we're going to manage traffic coming to and from the site and circulating within the site. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Paul Tummons to wrap things up.
Great. Carolyn, next slide, please. Perfect. Real quickly, I know that Commissioner Higgins, Commissioner Speck addressed some of the upcoming ANC meetings. So I'll just hit on the issues that we have moving forward with the BZA and Public Space Committee processes. So on February 16th, the applicant will be submitting our pre-hearing statement, which is our 21-day filing. This is the filing where we will submit all of the information that we presented this evening that really has been changes, modifications to the plans that have been made since the initial filing on November 1st. And also, as we continue to have dialogue with friends of the field, with the ANC commissioners about hopefully the proposed conditions of approval, the construction management plan. Similarly, or as I say, the next event would be on February 24th, which is the Public Space Committee hearing. That is the review and conceptual approval of the proposed curb cut on Nebraska Avenue. The next hearing or the next date of import is February 25th. That is when the district agencies are required to file their reports with the board of zoning adjustment. That would be the Office of Planning, the Department of Transportation. DOE may submit a report as part of the OP report. And then finally, as Commissioner, Commissioner Speck and Higgins noted, we have our public hearing with the BZA on March 9th. With that, I will pass it over to Marjo Talbot and let her provide concluding remarks.
Thank you so much, Paula and Jamie and Trey. We're really open to your questions, commissioners. We do feel that there's a lot that we will provide in services to the community. In the chat, there were some questions about the chart and field usage. And when it's an open field, I just want to acknowledge that all Saturdays and Sundays in the summer are open to the community as well as from December to February. We've also made sure that the fields will be available to the range of neighbors during the day, the academic day, knowing that ECC is in progress. We will make sure that anybody who uses the fields are always following our rules and regulations that are part of the agreement. But let me stop there and get any questions from the commissioners. Paul, you can toss it to different ones of us who you think it's appropriate.
Okay, we'll start with commissioner questions. Commissioners, if you want to raise your hand, it'll be easier to recognize you. Nobody has any questions?
Michael.
Mike, I can't, you're not raising your hand, Michael. I can't see you.
Yeah, he's raising his physical hand.
Okay. Oh, sorry. Can you show me the slide again with the open field, school field use that either the pie chart one or the prior one?
Sure, Carolyn, can you do that? So different seasons have different usage, but why don't we go to the general one? And then what specifically you have?
So I just want to make sure that I understand what is contemplated by open fields. Does that mean, for example, if I'm the coach of a team, I would apply to Murray and say, I'd like to practice my team?
No.
There? Or is it just first come, first served? And is it community-based use? Or if I'm in, I'm in an adult soccer league, can I bring my adult team there and play whenever we're available to play? How, Marjo, is, is it contemplated that the open fields will be moderated?
There are a couple of different ways and Trey, you can also pitch in, but we would love to work with the ANC to just make sure the parameters are what you all want and we want. But we see the open fields as times for the neighborhood to have access. During the academic day, when ECC is in session, we see the parking lot being available to ECC employees if needed. Or we can keep it locked during that time and then open it when the fields, we're going to have and access for families in the neighborhood to code in and be able to walk through the gates. We see this as really an open area that neighbors and kids can use when they want it. People from Nolte Wood could come over and walk the field and use the facilities. But it's not for outside groups to come and, you know, squat and use the facilities. Trey, do you want to add to that?
Yeah. What I would say, Trey, before you just ask, because I just want to say, Marjo, I, I know, I mean, I haven't made any final decision about anything related to this. All I can say in my pre-Ancient C Commissioner days as a coach of my kids' soccer and baseball teams, that finding a field to practice was an incredibly complicated thing. And if this field were there and there was access to it for coaches to sign up and have access to the field, it might be something to think about.
But we're not, we're trying to give access to certain youth groups that we feel can really follow and abide by the rules. That is what we're using as the youth sports time on it for DC soccer or others. But when the open field, it's not for people to come and play football games or baseball games. It's for people who can come over from the neighborhood to use that space. It's for ECC if they want to have their kids come and use it during the academic day. It's not to be a closed place for the general neighborhood. Does that answer your question, Michael?
Oh, you're muted, Michael.
Sort of, but I don't want to take up.
Okay, but we're happy to clarify that and work with you all on that clarity.
Yeah.
From the neighborhood is that they wanted to be able to come over and walk the area and have that as a place that they can toss their football with their kid or whatever, but not to have games or use that as a practice time.
I would add that what, what we have tried to do in our usage charts is identify for everyone the time where Murray needs to use the field for our programmatic uses and then identify some times that we think would be appropriate to sublease the field to youth sports organizations. Because we've had some conversations with those organizations and we know how they use the backfield on our Woodley Park campus. The open field time is time that is TBD that we are open to conversation about. I think what we have heard over the numerous community meetings that we've had is that there is a variety of opinions about how that open field time should be delegated and exactly how much openness there should be on the field. So to your point, Commissioner Zeldin, you know, how do we prevent someone from coming and squatting on the field, right? But by the same token, how do we allow the field to be open enough so that if someone wants to come over from Oliver Street and throw the football with their child when the field's not being used, how do we also accomplish that? So that is a difficult needle to thread, but we're open to conversations about exactly how to do that. And that 64% that you see there is the time where we're open to having that conversation about how to do it.
And we know that there are some good examples, like at Mount Vernon at Georgetown, Georgetown, Georgia, Washington, off of Fox Hall, they have a gate and a key code that the neighbors can access and get into the campus and use that because it's part of their community. Other questions?
Let, let me ask you a couple of questions that are in the Q and A, several by former Commissioner Madak. First, what is meant by downlight, security lights, and what is the height? What is the brightness and the color of the lights and will they be on all night?
So we don't know the brightness yet or the particular type of light that we would have. But what we mean by that is like a pole that you would see typically in a parking, parking lot. What we do understand is that there's a need to balance what we have there from a lighting and security perspective with also disturbing neighbors. We've heard both perspectives. And so again, we're in the position of trying to thread the needle where we don't want to have lights that are objectionable to someone who's close by. But we've also heard from neighbors that we need to make sure the parking lot does not become a hangout spot. So we would seek a middle ground on that in terms of the number of lights and the height on them so that we can try to accomplish both of those goals.
I'll just go ahead with some of these questions that are in the Q and A unless other commissioners want to raise their hand. Another question from former Commissioner Madak. Once that Oregon Avenue opens up again and the traffic gets heavier, are you looking at traffic patterns that will, not now, but after the pandemic is over and after Oregon Avenue is over, open?
Sure. So, you know, obviously, we're in the middle of a pandemic and so we weren't able to take new counts during the pandemic. We were fortunate in that we were able to get some historical counts in the study area from back in 2017. There were two intersections in our study area that were counted in 2017. We supplemented that data with data from a company called Street Lake Data that provides traffic metrics based on mobile devices, GPS devices, that type of thing. So the counts that we used in our study, so those 2017 counts were then grown to the current year based on DDOT approved growth rates, based on historical trends. Those counts were taken when Oregon Avenue was open. So the baseline that we used in our study does take into account Oregon Avenue being open. So we have accounted for that in our future conditions.
So Paul Fisher then asked about the possibility that Beach Drive is going to be permanently closed to traffic and how will that affect the traffic study?
Sure. So, you know, as we undertook our study, that determination hadn't been made. So our study does not contemplate Beach Drive being permanently closed. This came up at a meeting last week, and so what we said was we would defer to DDOT as to whether they thought we needed to do a supplemental analysis that looks at at Beach Drive being closed. But my understanding is as of right now, no decision has been made. So, you know, we haven't, we haven't taken that into account. I would, however, say that the volumes that we're using tend to be conservative, conservative in that, you know, they tend to overpredict volumes of traffic for two reasons. And that's because when we grow our traffic, we're looking not only at the historical growth rate for traffic that's happened in the study area, but we're also explicitly accounting for any developments that are happening immediately adjacent to the project. And so we've taken those two factors into account. And we've, we've grown our traffic volumes by an annual growth rate that we actually compound every year. So it's not a simple linear growth rate, it's a compounded growth rate.
Okay, one last question is in the Q and A. As a comment that people are unlikely to travel to games via bicycle, but moreover, how does adding bicycles to the increased traffic mix make things safer? Again, for you, Jamie.
Sure. So to be clear, our trip generation did not assume any percentage of trips would be made by bicycle. What we've done, and frankly, it was in response to a DDOT request, was provide bike racks so that kids who live in the neighborhood who want to bike or parents who want to bike with their children to the fields are able to do that. There's a place for them to safely lock up their bike. You know, I think everybody's got a different opinion about bike safety. And all we're saying is that we want people who choose to bike to be able to do so and be able to lock their bike up safely and have a place for them to park. Again, we didn't take any particular discount in vehicular trips, assuming that, you know, five or 10% of the trips would be made by bike. We just want to accommodate that eventuality for people who choose to do that.
Peter?
I'll take my lead from the chair on this. This is a question about ECC. Do you want to stick strictly to the focus on?
Go ahead, Peter.
Okay, it seems to me one of the high level positives about the proposal is that ECC could restart its program. Former Commissioner Madak, in an earlier post in the chat, raises the question about the reality of that. She says, and I think this is true, that there's a big push about mainstreaming disabled kids. To anybody on the ECC team, what, what is the reality? If you want to give us a sort of percentage likelihood that you will open, what is the reality that you will open in the near term if this arrangement with Maray goes through? And oh, do you have other sources except Maray to cope with the financial problems you had that caused you to close down?
Or Bill or Stephanie here?
I thought I saw Stephanie stayed on the line. Well, we can, we can bracket this question and bring it up later if they.
It was, it was answered in the chat, Peter. They answered it in the chat, that specific question.
Okay, I will find that.
Amy or Stephanie?
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cause, throw a curve ball.
Hey, any, any other questions for Maray by commissioners?
I just wanted to respond to one thing in the chat, if I'm allowed to, Randy, which is why Maray has not been willing to consider a single field. And I think that the answer to that really is programmatic. We need a baseball diamond. There are very few baseball areas in the city. That is a dearth that is out there. And we also need for our teams to have a field that allows us to play soccer, lacrosse, football. So it's not two different fields for two different games going on. It's the baseball diamond that reaches into the multipurpose field when they're playing baseball. And then there's a multipurpose field, but our need and the reason we have agreed to do this lease is because it really fulfills the programmatic needs that we have. And so it would be a real reduction of what the use of this area is for us. So we're not being arbitrary at all or trying to grab special hand. We're trying to provide these different kinds of uses on the field.
There have been a couple of questions in the chat and in the Q and A about links to the various documents that we've been talking about. There are three different websites that have a lot of information, ton of information about this proposal. One is the ANC's website. We have a page dedicated to the Maray proposal. And Connie, maybe you can put that in the chat if you can. There's also a Friends of the Field webpage. I think that is put in the chat that has a lot of the information. And then there's the Maray website, which also has a tremendous amount of information that's available there of all the things that they've been filing at the BCA. Okay, Michael?
Randy, just Stephanie let me know that she can't respond because she's not given access on the platform. She's there, but she's not.
Oh, she's, she's, did we demote her back to an attendee? Okay.
So can she get promoted back?
Yeah, meantime, Michael, you want to go ahead and ask your question?
Well, it's more of a comment, Marjo, which is one of the reasons that I said could thought be given to allowing the field to be used for team practice is exactly what you said. If you coach a baseball team, you are hard pressed to find a place to practice. And so you may lease to Cap City and they may have their games, but if you are a coach, you are still stuck with no viable place to practice. So I know Trey, you're saying you got to try to find a middle ground. Should this thing go forward and I'm presupposing the outcome here, but I'm just saying, as you think about what is a middle ground, the same need that drives your desire to have a baseball field would be the same need that every baseball coach in, in the greater area has too.
Right. And that's why, as Trey said, we've been trying to thread the needle with the neighbors and the community. And, you know, initially, in a lot of our conversations with the surrounding neighbors, they said, we're fine with Maray being on the field, but we don't want youth groups. We feel that it's important to have time for the youth groups to be there, and that's why we've carved out that time in the process. Again, happy to continue to work with you and ANC and others on what that balance is. I know that, you know, we could rent our field 50 times over because there's a lack of field space. We can only provide it so much because there's going to be, there's much more need than there is. But we're trying to offer a bigger piece. One of the comments is also that we do and had developed the beautiful field in Jelliffe that also has the baseball diamond, which has huge amount of need. Once we are able to be in this new space at ECC, we want to work with releasing some of our preferred times at Jelliffe so that more people can have access to field.
I'm going to, I'm going to ask one question in the, the Q and A now, and then we'll try to get to Stephanie, maybe a little bit later to answer Peter's question. The, the question is, the recent 3D model now shows some elevations on the 28th Street alley. That's not, there's not an alley on 28th Street. It's just a, that's on Rittenhouse. All of the change in topography combined with the removal of mature trees and a large amount of artificial turf could impact drainage for homes on all sides. Has there been a drainage study on how the impact, how this will impact houses on Nebraska, Rittenhouse, Utah, and 28th? What can be done if neighbors start having water issues?
Paul, do you want to take that? Because I think we've done a lot of work with VICA and others.
Sure, absolutely. So I know that, um, yes, I think so. I know that there's been a lot of discussion with our civil engineer, Brian Rule of VICA and about the stormwater management component of this plan. This plan will have to receive building permit approvals from the Department of Environment and Energy. And in that DOE permitting process, they look at the stormwater implications. We believe that the very significant thorough design that is proposed on this site with the turf structure, with the stormwater retention facilities on the site, that we will actually be improving the stormwater runoff that currently occurs on the site, a site that currently has no stormwater runoff. So we think that it will, in fact, become a better situation. But most importantly, it will be a situation that satisfies all of the district's requirements with regard to stormwater.
Okay, Connie, we're out of time for Maray at this point. You have a question? Here, you want?
I was just, I was just going to make a statement so I could do that after.
We'll let, um, let's go, let's go to Friends of the Field. I mean, we're trying to be fair to all. Okay, all right, all right, we'll do that. We'll go directly.
Stephanie, I apologize, and I will come back to you when we get to the broader discussion.
Understood. That's fine. Thank you.
Okay, the, thank you very much to all the Maray presenters. We appreciate it. Now we'll have presentations by Friends of the Field. The presenters there are Ed Donahue, Claudia Russell, David Patton, and Bruce Sherman. And would any of you like, when you get on, would, would any of you like to be made a co-host so you could share your screen? If so, just let me know.
And are they raising their hands for Lisa?
Yeah, um, Randy, will you change, Carolyn?
Yes, I make her no longer a co-host.
Thank you.
Was it just two for Friends of the Field?
No, Claudia Russell and Bruce Sherman.
Raise your hands.
Yeah.
Okay, I think I think everybody's there then, okay? All right, did anybody want to share their screen? Hearing none, I will assume not. Okay.
Um, I, Claudia is not here yet, and I don't think Bruce Sherman is here yet.
Yeah.
Bruce. There, Claudia is, she's not on camera, but she's there.
They're all panelists, yes. Everybody is listed as a panelist.
And Chair Speck is Bruce. Thank you. If you could make me, I need to share my screen. You can make me the host.
I can certainly do that. Okay, you should be able to share your screen now. Okay, and Bruce or Ed or whoever is going to start, you want to let, let me know when you're ready?
I will, I will start Chair Speck, and then I will include our legal counsel at Donahue and my colleagues, as you've already introduced them, Claudia Russell and David Patton.
Okay, I'm going to start your time right now.
Very good. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. We appreciate this opportunity to present to the ANC. We are, as you know, Friends of the Field. We formed in the fall of 2021 and now count some 250 supporters in our ranks. Two thirds of us live within 200 feet of ECC. Some of us can literally reach out and touch the field. We're grateful to all of our supporters for attending and speaking at this and other meetings, for researching and understanding the issues, and for writing more than 70 letters to the Board of Zoning Adjustment, letters that we've now shared with the ANC. I want to say to those who support Maray's proposal, we respect your interest and your voices. We just ask your understanding that while you might attend an occasional game at the field, we'll be attending every game because they'll be played in our front and backyards. And not just for a while, but for the rest of our lives. The ECC Maray lease is renewable for up to 50 years. Commissioners, especially Commissioners Cadwell, Chang, Gore, Goslin, and Zeldin, who have thus far not been as involved in the review process as Chair Speck and Commissioner Higgins, we welcome this opportunity to speak with you directly. Above all, whether you agree or disagree with us, we want you to know that we're not strangers or interlopers. We're your neighbors, like you, that live in the neighborhood and are deeply invested in its future. Our position is straightforward. We seek a plan that both meets the needs of ECC and Maray and those of the immediate neighbors, as DC zoning regulations require. The current plan does not achieve this goal. What Maray is proposing is too big, too intrusive, and too intensive in its proposed use for our residential neighborhood. The development process and ANC review, we regret to say, have been fraught with manifest flaws and biases in favor of Maray. The rush to the March 9th hearing at BZA is unwarranted and rash, in our view, given the overwhelming ongoing concerns and questions. Tonight, we're calling on the ANC to proactively advise the BZA that this project needs more time and genuine inclusive engagement of the residents to meet the goal of satisfying all parties. We're seeking postponement. Our participation and efforts to date have taken place, notwithstanding our objections to the process. Last week, after surveying our 250 supporters, we put our concerns on the table through the ad hoc ANC Advisory Committee. Among the issues that our community, the 250 supporters of Friends of the Field have identified, areas of concern include having a single field, having storm runoff managed to a 50-year standard, no subleases, ECC Maray, and neighborhood use only. Over the weekend, we heard back from Maray. Maray confirmed what they had told us at the start, that while they were open to making some modifications, and we credit Maray for making modifications along the way, the essential elements of their plan were non-negotiable. I want to turn it over to Ed Donahue to further elaborate our case and explain our party status at BZA. Ed?
Thank you, Bruce. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening. I wanted to briefly go through some of the parties, talk about the process. As the first bullet says here, this is not simply a transaction between two private parties. Both Maray and ECC are nonprofit tax subsidized organizations. They're charter based. They are charged with advancing the public good. Zoning regulations, more on that in a bit, are directed toward the safeguard of the affected parties. I don't want to talk about one party in particular, Friends of the Field. We comprise the neighbors most directly affected, and we believe that our objections and our concerns merit special consideration. Next slide, please. Special exception is a discretionary process. This is a property that is owned R1B, and so a special exception for a school or an athletic facility requires special exception review and approval. Special exception criteria, quote, "will be in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the zoning regulations and zoning maps." It goes on, "and that the proposed use will not tend to affect adversely the use of neighboring property in accordance with the zoning regulations and zoning maps." It's these very objectional conditions that we want to talk to you about, and we have speakers to address both the topography, the environmental, the intensity of use, et cetera, that Bruce alluded to. Let me go to the next slide. I'll mention that we certainly recognize the ANC's role in this process, and the ANC's role and its position is entitled to great weight at the Board of Zoning Adjustment. What we want to address is the Board of Zoning Adjustments or the ANC's procedures that got to that position. Let's go to the next slide. Earlier this, or actually in January, we petitioned and received party status at the Board of Zoning Adjustment. As such, we are entitled to cross-examinate witnesses to present our case and to submit proposed findings in fact. We are also entitled to participation at this ANC, and we've taken advantage of that at every opportunity. We have notified the ANC that we are proceeding under protest because we've identified a number of because we've identified a number of procedural flaws and frankly questionable chronologies. We've identified those things in letters dated January 13th, January 23rd, and another letter from myself dated January 26th. We got a partial response from the ANC on January the 14th. We are hoping that in the interim, we're gonna get a full response to the questions that we've raised about procedural aspects of the, the application, about when commissioners became aware of it, and their participation leading up to the filing of the application in November of, of last year. Uh, so finally, Mr. Frank, hand it over, Mr. Chairman. We look forward to that full response that was alluded to in, on January the 14th. Uh, is it David or Claudia, Bruce?
It will be Claudia, who will address our ongoing concerns and questions. Claudia Russell. Claudia, you may need to unmute yourself.
Thank you. Claudia Russell, live, I live adjacent to the sports complex. I'm an architect. Uh, this sports complex has no comparable equivalent in the city with its intensity of development. It ignores buffers of enough magnitude to isolate fields and parking from the neighbors in sight and sound. How can this be allowed in a residential neighborhood? Neighbor views have become stepped walls and our vistas are now fencing and netting, the combination of which exceeds the heights of many of our homes. Where is the respect for the neighbors? The field is not the site of laughing children, but rather that of serious regulation sports, of whistles and shot clocks, loud and crowd are part of sports. Where is a noise study for sound mitigation? Next. More than four acres of natural vegetation and filtering topsoil have been stripped. A heat island of 3.7 acres of harmful artificial turf and a strip-like mall parking lot of hardscape, the length of seven residences, will replace it. Stormwater runoff is the number one pollution problem. Without saturating soils, all of this will be headed to Rock Creek Park and ultimately the Chesapeake Bay, through a pipe or overland, depending on the rain intensity. Where is Maray's concern for the environment, much less the future? Forty trees from our precious tree canopy will be removed, and four heritage trees that's 100-inch diameter at the trunk are being moved against great odds of survival. DC prides itself in maintaining and growing its tree canopy. How can this proposal be supportive of that goal? Nebraska Avenue is the link to Rock Creek Park for families and bicyclists. And yet the proposed sports complex is adding traffic congestion and hunt and pet parking at the very time that our sidewalks and streets will be used most often. Buses for pickup and drop-off will hug the shoulders on either side of the sloped driveway to the street, making visibility difficult at best. How can the safety of our pedestrians and bicyclists be assured? The transportation study must consider among many things the traffic of a post-COVID city, the proposed future bicycle lanes, the limited parking on the residential streets, the closure of Beach Drive for traffic, and the ECC use. Putting a non-community use into a residential neighborhood is damaging to our community fabric. How will Maray accommodate the traffic and parking needs adequately and fairly for the residents of our community? Subleasing the fields only compounds the drawbacks of this proposal, making this never-ending daily mix that does not support the city's environmental goals, its recent efforts to protect pedestrians, and its zoning regulations designed to stabilize communities. In conclusion, how will the various entities that both represent the citizens and review this proposal meet the requirements of zoning so that it's not likely to become, in zoning language, objectionable to adjoining and nearby property because of noise, traffic, or otherwise objectionable conditions? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Claudia. And now we thought it would be helpful to the ANC Commissioners and to the community at large to, to take a, a different look at the ECC property. And for that, I want to turn it over to my colleague, David Patton.
Thank you very much. My name is David Patton. I live on 28th Street and I am professionally a transportation planner. Next slide, please. This is the Maray Plan stripped to its essence. It's five acres leased from ECC with 3.7 acres of artificial turf, creating a multi-season, multi-sports complex. Maray's presentations have so far focused on images of the field facilities detached from the neighborhood and community setting like this image is. Next. Friends of the Field begins here. The Maray footprint surrounded by nearly 400 homes. Each house represents a family who has probably made their most significant lifetime investment here. And not just money, but careers, lives, friendships, other choices. It's not only Maray who has spent decades looking for a place to put down roots. The Maray facilities squeezed into this densely settled neighborhood would instantly become the largest landscape feature in the entire community and negatively affect the quality of others' lives and the enjoyment of their properties. Next. Some reasons for objecting to Maray's proposal are clear, as it's been said. It's too big, too intrusive, and shoehorned into the site, leaving only minimal buffers. This slide focused tightly on ECC. The blue dots represent Friends of the Field supporters. There are more than 250 of us so far, with the greatest concentration here, closest to the greatest impact. More than two thirds of property owners within the 200-foot notification buffer used by Maray and endorsed by BZA are opposed to this proposal as presented. Next. Could there be a better way? Anyone can try designing a better layout, a better proposal than the one on the table. Let's start with this blank canvas of a wintertime leaf-off view of the ECC. Next. Then let's ask what can reasonably be accommodated on the site? We can start with simple shapes, like choosing new cabinets in a kitchen showroom. Two rectangles here represent an American football field and a large, regulation-sized soccer field drawn to scale. The baseball field is shown at the same scale, 90-foot baselines. Next. It's possible to put any one of these large playing fields on the site without disturbing current conditions excessively. Even the pro-size soccer field could be made to fit while preserving adequate buffers between the field and neighbors. Next. But trying to fit all three cries the space, and we certainly understand you're not gonna play baseball and soccer at the same time. As we've seen from both the 2D site plans and the 3D model, the Maray team has pushed their needs nearly to the property line in all directions, and this has understandably upset the nearest neighbors the most. The Maray team says the problem is site constraints of slope, limited size, and mandatory setbacks. Friends of the Field believes instead that the problem is one of appetite, an attempt to fit too many activities into a space that can't reasonably accommodate them. As one neighbor said in a call exploring the 3D model, "You shouldn't be trying to do all that here." One field might work, but two or three is too much. Thank you very much.
Thank you, David. In sum, this is our appeal to the ANC Commissioners, to Maray, and to the community at large. Maray's proposal is a neighborhood-altering development. We just now have the 3D renderings. Barely a fraction of ANC residents have seen them. Many who have are shocked at the project's size and intrusiveness. Far greater socialization of the plan is needed across the ANC. Maray needs to meet our repeated request for an online interactive version that residents can use on their own schedules. The entire process has been one of rolling discovery. Seemingly every day, new facts, further studies, and planned modifications emerge. It's a moving target. We just received Maray's 140-page transportation review. We now need time to examine it, have our Friends of the Field transportation consultant review it, and engage further with Maray's consultants. Myriad other key areas and questions remain, as we have noted. There is no need to rush to judgment. The March 9th date for the BZA hearing is arbitrary. Maray's lease at Jelliffe runs through 2029. There is abundant time to get this right. Above all, the ANC needs to give constituents a genuine opportunity to engage in meaningful neighborhood planning, not superficial, post facto review of a done deal. You have the model, the small area plan. It practices truly collaborative, community problem-solving. The ANC has been a supporter and facilitator of the small area plan. So why not follow this approach now for this project? Until these conditions are met, we urge the ANC to petition BZA to postpone the rezoning hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. Okay, um, Bruce, if you want to take your, uh, presentation down so we can see everyone. Okay, Commissioners, you want to, um, raise your hand if you've, uh, have questions?
And Chair Speck, what I'll do is I'll field the question and then direct it to Ed, Claudia, and David as appropriate.
Okay. I don't think there are any questions in the Q and A, uh, for Friends of the Field. Lisa?
Uh, yes. Oh, he took the presentation down. I wanted to ask about, um, I think on the first slide, it was a 50-year, I'm sorry. I'm back and cleaner just started. I had one of the automatic Roomba's under the couch, and my son brings it in and plugs it up and it goes off. So you had, um, on the first slide, a reference to stormwater management, a 50-year. Are you able to put that back up real quick?
Well, it was just a reference to that.
What was it? Okay, so where, where did you, where, where does that reference come from?
Let me, uh, turn that over to Claudia. Claudia?
That is, at this point, there's a DC ambitious, uh, green, um, agenda. And they want to, uh, have more stormwater management because as, as you heard from me, I hope, is that stormwater is the greatest pollutant. And so the effort now is 15 years is required by DC.
Okay.
Maray has said that they will do 25.
Okay.
But 50 is a much more reasonable approach for the future. We've had 25-year storms every, every July. We are really in need of forward-thinking. This is for 50 years. And we know that the resultant of stormwater is destroying Rock Creek, and it's like, it's carried to the bay, too much stormwater. And we don't really have a very good infrastructure in the city right now because the city piping was designed for a different climate. We're changing. So we really want to encourage that we're looking forward and we're being very forward-minded and very good stewards of the environment and the future. It's, it's a wonderful thought that we could actually improve things.
Thank you.
Any other questions from Commissioners?
I'll just make a comment, uh, which is I think Mr. Sherman ought to be careful with the analogy to the small area plan. If, uh, if you think that's not, uh, on a very tight schedule, I think you're wrong. Um, I've been a critic of, of the process along the way, and, um, it's a, it's a, not a great analogy to pick.
Chair Speck, can I, uh, respond to Commissioner?
Certainly.
I appreciate that comment. The important thing for us, Commissioner Goslin and the other Commissioners, as citizens of the district and as residents in this ANC, is that when a project of this magnitude comes down the pike, that it stands to reason those most affected and the entire community would have an opportunity to participate in the early-stage planning. That's the point we're making. This project, as I believe Maray indicated, was communicated to the ANC almost a year ago in the spring. It's at that point when we, as residents here, could have had meaningful participation to look at community problem solving. That's when we wanted to come into this. Imagine if you're in a neighborhood and you have a project like this dropped on you, and then you're told, well, you can comment on it and you can make requests for modifications around the fringes. We don't think that inclusive governance today in the world we live in, that this is an example of it. And we have, therefore, as you know, through the communications we've shared with the Commission, raised the concern that we should have been involved long ago. And the point of our presentation is that we can still be involved. We are working with the Advisory Committee with the concerns that I identified on the table. But we need to take a step back and we need to look at the balance that we all need to strike between ECC's interest in Maray's and the immediate neighbors. And we, as I say, do not feel we're striking the right balance here. We think we can, and we will look forward to a process that enables us to do so.
Uh, Lisa, uh, can you please, um, get rid of Josh Allen so that I could ask my question?
You said?
Josh Allen in the chat. No, get rid of him.
I don't see Josh Allen.
There is a person who's in the chat right now, and, um, I think he's, uh,
Oh, I'm sorry.
Please, uh, you need to get him out of there. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, he's removed.
Thank you.
I mean, we got, let me just remind people, this is a, uh, for, form of civility, and we're not gonna tolerate uh, that kind of language in the chat. It's not just, it's just not gonna be tolerated. Connie?
Um, well, I want to, uh, I'd like to say a few words. Uh, Bruce, uh, we have received your correspondence. And I will say this, and I'm saying this because it's being recorded and I, I feel like I need to, um, counter what you're suggesting. Uh, we had no, uh, we did not get plans. We did not, not have, uh, the community involved last spring. We were very much involved in the overcrowding at Lafayette with the preschool, uh, pre-K, uh, classes, and we were looking desperately for a place, uh, to address that particular issue. And we got wind that ECC was looking, um, to, uh, perhaps lease their space, possibly sell their space. We did not know. And we, uh, had a conversation with Stephanie Nash, and, um, she said very clearly to us that they were willing to lease but not sell. And so we engaged with DCPS in that effort. We were not aware of Maray School. We had, we only heard of it, uh, through what was made public, and we did not have a great understanding of what was going on. So we did not have access to plans. We were not involved in that particular way. And when we became involved, we immediately involved the community. I, I, I want to make that very clear. Okay? So we are open to that. That is our, uh, charge, is to get input and from all of the community. So I, I, I want to go back to your slide. I do appreciate the blue dots that you have with, uh, the houses and the families that are part of Friends of the Field. That's, that's good. I don't know about the other families in the other homes, uh, if they are in opposition to your particular position or not. But I believe that all the meetings that we've set on the calendar, the time even tonight that we're putting is to have a chance to listen to all parties and to weigh, uh, everyone's concerns. Maray and ECC, the two parties, uh, struck a deal. Um, the reason, and in the chat, there was several people who commented on why their interests are important. Their interests are only important because they're the less see. And so, you know, they, they, they're entering a lease because they have their own interests. And so, you know, they, they're entering a lease because they have their own interests. And ECC has taken this lease because ECC has their own interests. And because they struck a deal, now we need to know what the effect is on the community. So I want to say again, you know, we are open. There is, and this process is, is even more involved than other issues that we've dealt with. Meaning we have meetings on the table. We have a dedicated webpage on the webmaster, so I know that. I've been putting everything on there so people are aware. We, we, and, and when, I forget who, on one of the slides about things changing, things are changing because concerns are being addressed. Now, you may not like the way Maray has addressed your concerns. It may not be fully addressed, so they may change yet again. So I, I just want to make clear that we're all, as neighbors, we're all neighbors. We all live in this, this area. And that there are people who live certainly closer that will be affected, people who live maybe further away, who may be affected in other ways, and people both positive and negative. And I want to assure you that I am open-minded, I'm listening. Okay? And I don't really want to hear, again, this accusation that somehow we, you had, we had six months before you got to see something. That's just not true. So I want to lay that to rest. And I'm doing it publicly rather than in a letter because there's so much going on with the commission. There's a lot that we're handling and we're volunteers and this is a part-time. There's, this is a part-time position. So, you know, please, tonight is Chinese New Year. Okay, today's the Lunar New Year and I'm sitting here with all of you and I'm listening and I'm taking notes. All right, I'm not with my family. So that's what I want to say. And I will stop right now.
I would just say, in response, that I appreciate your service. I recognize you and the other commissioners are unpaid volunteers. We recognize that you have a lot on your plates, that this is a complex issue. We were not alleging in what we presented tonight or in previous communications that we have sent to you that there was a plan in place that you have been involved in that we were not involved in. What we are saying is that when this came to light, that Maray and ECC had signed a lease, we would have looked to the ANC or somebody to begin then a process of consultation with the neighbors. Now, having said that, this is not the occasion to detail other concerns that we have laid out to you in private. But you have those, you know what they are. And we would welcome an opportunity to discuss those with you as our counsel has indicated in a fuller reply from the ANC.
Any other commissioners have questions or comments for Friends of the Field?
I just want to, I want to add something, Randy, in following up on Connie's thing. Bruce, you have on one of your slides, an insinuation that we have not acted in good faith. Your letters to us imply, if not state directly, that we have not acted in good faith, that we are conflicted or we have predisposition in favor of one party or the other. And I just want to say in support of what Connie's saying, it's factually untrue. And you have it in your public slide here, it's right there on, on, on the page for the community to see. It's offensive. And you should get, give thought to the tone to which you address us. Not that it will impact how we decide, we'll decide on the facts and the requirements. But it's just insulting as neighbors to be accused by you this way.
Commissioner Zeldin, I would only say that the issues that we have raised with you privately, and I'm reserving judgment about those now and not bringing them up.
No, you've raised, let me just say, you've raised them tonight publicly because they're on your slide.
Right, because we've raised them previously with you privately. We have not.
They are pub, they are public, actually. I posted it on the website with our partial response, which was to say that there is any kind of conflict of interest. We have none, none of us have a conflict of interest here, number one. Number two, we don't agree with your timeline. And we don't have the time to say, to respond where you say to us that there's been no chance for you to have had, been able to have input. I mean, these are things that we are doing right now. It is posted on the dedicated webpage, your letter to us. There's nothing that's private here. We want to be transparent. Okay, and you could ask the question right now if you want to, and we could answer it on the spot if you would like. You can pull out your letter and we can do it right here. There is nothing, there's nothing to hide. Okay, I, we're not, we're not colluding with another party. Okay, we are here to listen to your objections and we are here to trying to make it work. And I want to respond to other comments about us walking the property. I have walked the property with Commissioner Gore in the spring to look at ECC's facilities. I have walked the property again sometime in the fall myself. I have walked the property after our last public meeting, okay, in the cult to see what Maray's plans are. Okay, to physically look at it. I am absolutely supportive of helping abate any noise, okay, of things, of having vegetation or whatever so that you're not offended, neighbors are not offended by anything that they see, like a goalpost. You know, I heard Maray say there's 9,000 square feet of grass. You know, I, I went to look at it, I looked very carefully at the 3D images to see, is that true? You know, so I am, I, my ears are open. I am here to listen and learn and also to make sure that your concerns are addressed. But like in every negotiation, not everyone is going to be happy. Not Maray, not ECC, and not the Friends of the Field and other people, okay, who are not a part, a party. Okay, but we will listen and we will do what we can, which is our job. Okay, this is why we were elected, is to, is to do the listening and to do the, and to ask questions and to hear. But I do not want to be distracted by accusations that are untrue. So I'm, I'm going to repeat myself. That is not effective. Please send us a letter of your objections after you've now seen some modifications. Send us a letter about what, what you would like to be done that has not yet been, been done. That would be more productive.
Commissioner Chang, I appreciate that. And I would simply ask in kind that the commission answer in private, the issues that we have raised with you for which there has not been a complete response. So we're, we're simply raising that. I, again, I, I'm exercising discretion and not going into them, into those details here.
Lisa, please.
Are we, let's just get it on the table. I'm kind of, I'm with Connie on this.
Yeah.
Issues, the conflict of interest?
Yeah.
We're not, we're not alleging a conflict of interest.
You did, you did allege. A conflict of interest. Donna Hughes' letter, or your letter, I forget who signed it, alleged a conflict of interest essentially. And said, essentially, tell us why this isn't true. When, when did you stop beating your wife? That was the tone of your letter, Bruce.
Ed, would you like?
Do you want a public, do you want a public?
You want a public statement?
Commissioners?
No conflict.
I have no conflict here.
Right.
I mean, that shouldn't even be on the table. There is no conflict of interest with any commissioner in this project with Maray, with ECC, absolutely none. Is that on or still, is that off the table now?
May I, may I clarify what we said? Because we did not allege a conflict of interest. Read our statement, that's not what we alleged. We spoke of even a perception of bias or preference in the process. And what we have identified, that once we pointed this out, the commission, in specific Chair Speck, acknowledged that he had a daughter who had attended Maray. Now, the reason.
25 years ago.
25 years ago. May I, may I make, may I make the point? We recognize it was 25 years ago. And more than 25 years ago, Marjo Talbot began her service as head of school at Maray. When the BZA heard our application for party status, member Lorna John recused herself because she had a family member who attends Maray. When Maray parents of current and former students participated in Councilwoman Lewis George's town hall, digital town hall. And when the ANC held its previous meeting, an open session, to have public comment on the Maray proposal, virtually every member who spoke that had an affiliation, past or present with Maray, acknowledged that. Now, is it too much to ask that when this body, the ANC, is considering a proposal from Maray, that there would be that disclosure? We were not alleging any financial impropriety. You misunderstood, you mistook what we said, that was not it. In addition to what we have raised with you privately, and I'll put another issue on the table since you're asking me to. Chairman Speck edited, as you know, because we've privately told you this, edited Maray's BZ application in draft before it was filed to BZA. He not only provided line edits that one might say were related to style, substance, grammar, what have you. He provided very specific strategic and legal advice. Now, we, we ask, and we have asked the commission, you have not answered us. And you're now.
What, you've asked us what?
We asked you to explain if this was appropriate, if this was normal for the ANC to do. And we have received to date, no answer.
Would you, would you like an answer right now?
Well, as a result of this process, if this is what it takes, get the answer, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're happy to answer it. Answer the question.
Put myself back on here then. Bruce, as you well know, because you were at that meeting, I believe, certainly a lot of the Friends of Field were. On November 1st, I met in the backyard of Jenny Bacchus, a number of the neighbors. At that time, as my notes reflect, I said, I had a meeting, I had seen the application prior to its being filed. And Commissioner Higgins and I both gave some comments. Those comments, which I assume you have not seen, have you seen those?
Yes.
You have seen them, then you know what I said then. What I said was, well, I don't know how you got them because they didn't go to you. But the, the, the comments were exactly the same kinds of things that the neighbors are raising. About noise, about traffic, about stormwater runoff, about the size of the, the parking lot. All of those kinds of things were raised in, and I raised them with Maray at that time. And I said, these are concerns. We were doing exactly what the ANC is supposed to do. If anyone comes to us with a permit application, we do this regularly. We, we advise them and say, this is a problem. And that's exactly what we did here. We advised Maray, these are problems that you need to address. And as a matter of fact, they have begun addressing them. They had not addressed them in that filing, the original filing, but they have since because we raised them.
Right. So two, two things that I think are important to note. First of all, that occurred at a time when the residents, the neighbors, the community you represent, had no meaningful participation in the development of the proposal. And yet Maray had.
I don't think any of this is productive. If you want to deal with facts, I've given you the facts now. I don't know how you got that, that markup of the, the application, which we gave to Maray and not to anyone else. But I would have been, I've been perfectly happy to give it to anybody because it does not reflect any bias in favor of Maray. It does not reflect giving them any legal advice. It, it reflects our communicating to them the concerns that we were aware of and that we knew the neighbors would raise. That's what we were doing. That's what I do. I mean, Commissioner Zeldin can tell you about another application recently that we were involved in, which I told them, here are the problems with it. And that's always what we do. That's, that's our job.
And, and it's just to add to that, Bruce, it's our job to do this in public. We're, we're a public body, we're elected officials. What, when, when you send us something, we post it. We don't have private communications. We have public communications and we articulate all of the things that we think are relevant to the decision-making process. Your accusation that we are conflicted, and it is, you can say it's not. But, you know, as I said in my response, my daughter, age 36, went to Maray summer camp one year when she was five. That's not contemplated by the conflict of interest regulations that govern our behavior. We know our conflict of interest regulations that govern our behavior. And whether my daughter went there at age five or not is irrelevant to it. And your request that that be acknowledged in some way as to prove or disprove a proposition is, is just, is factually incorrect. And as I said, as a neighbor, offensive.
Can I, can I suggest that this is? We made, we made a decision that, that, that we did not think this was a useful path to go down. And that's why we gave you the response we did, Mr. Sherman. And now here we are going down. You, the Friends of the Field, if they feel this is somehow crucially important to this, you pursue it. That's all dandy. But we need to get information to make a decision about a proposal and about the possible effects on the neighborhood. And it seems to me that we've now wasted a good deal of time trying to answer questions that you simply don't think our answers are good enough. And so I, my own sense is the commission should move on.
I agree, I agree. And David, unless you've got something that is absolutely pressing and is relevant, relevant to the application. Let's, let's deal with the application and the facts here. Why are we dealing with all this stuff? I, I just don't understand it.
Chairman Speck, you asked, you asked a specific question.
Go ahead.
You sent me your draft markup of the Maray application.
Oh, I didn't know.
First or second.
That's right after that meeting.
And you invited me to share it with others, which I.
You asked, and I gave it to you. So, I mean, how, that was, I've forgotten it then, but that's absolutely transparent, isn't it?
Will you let me?
Is there any, is there any attempt to, to hide that? I gave it to you.
Yes, you did. You invited me to, to share it with others, which I have done.
Well, and that's, that's fine. I'd forgotten that. But yes, that, that's how you've got, gotten it. But that, you know, that again demonstrates though that we didn't have anything to hide, absolutely nothing.
The point for us, I think, in this, Mr. Speck, is that you made some of the observations that we continue to make, that any reasonable person would make. And we're continuing to not get satisfaction.
So I don't understand why you're raising this then. Jazz, we're going to deal with this quickly now. I, it doesn't warrant any additional time. Jazz? You're muted, Jazz.
We, we had a schedule for this meeting, Randy, and I'm a new commissioner. I came to this meeting hoping to learn about the proposal and objections to it. And I think we've accomplished that, so I move adjourned.
I, I, I will agree with that. I, I think we've done whatever we can do. We will.
Randy, we need to, can we get Stephanie's answer to Peter's question before we adjourn?
We, we can do that. And, you know, I.
I'll suspend my motion while we do that.
I, I'm disappointed that Friends has taken this tack. It's not going to influence the way we assess the merits of the case. But that's what we wanted to focus on tonight was the merits of the case. And unfortunately, it's gotten distracted. That's not our intention. Okay.
Will you, will you allow one final comment from our side?
No. We've had enough. Stephanie, are you still around?
Stephanie, if you could raise your hand, I'll promote you.
Jazz, your hand is still up.
Thank you.
Stephanie, let me just, are you on?
Yes, I'm on.
Let me just re, repeat the question. One of the high-level pluses of this proposal would be if ECC. would be if ECC, that, that even Friends of the Field, many members of Friends of Field seem to agree with in the chat, would be if ECC could restart its program. But, but former Commissioner Madak um raises a question in the chat about whether or not, in fact, public policy has changed, and there is much more of an emphasis on mainstreaming um special needs kids, such that there really is not um, that there's not as much reality to the possibility of you restarting your program. Can you address that and maybe it's some, in some way sort of say, how likely and how quickly could there actually be a, a revived uh Episcopal Children's Center?
Thank you, Commissioner Gosman. Uh, it's an interesting question. Um, it's one we've grappled with i- in our many years when we were having referrals. This is not new, that there's often an overture to, to keep students in the general ed setting or in a public setting. However, the degree and the extent of the students' needs has always prevailed, that referrals indeed do come, because the schools, whether that's the intention and the hope, whether it's financially driven, all of those things are, are true, but in the end, the referrals continue. And what I might want to add is that um we also had, when we were opened, and I'm, I do not, I have not heard that it's changed. I've had to stay on the pulse for this even during our closing. We had 17 charter schools, students represented in our DC charter schools. Charter schools function completely different in terms of how referrals are made. They can come independent from the ASI, they can come independent from DCPS. So even if that was the case, we would still most likely be getting referrals from students that are in our district charter schools. So yes, it's always a concern that unfortunately, these things are sometimes money-driven. And um the reality is people may want to keep them close in our neighborhood public schools. But the needs of the children, especially now after COVID, the emotional needs, and I shouldn't say after, because we're still in a pandemic. Um, the emotional needs of children and how that's being met, the number of students that have been out of school. And um when I say out of school, out of school virtually, um out of school face-to-face and needing to be virtual, it has had great impact. I continue to speak and stay open with my conversations with the folks at, at the ASI. Our application is being looked at and for approval even now. Um, I, I can't imagine they would be doing that and giving me the feedback that they're giving if they weren't still doing referrals. I am also in touch with the other non-publics that are still getting referrals. So while that is a concern, and I appreciate the concern, I don't see that as something that's going to impact and certainly not be considered unrealistic. Um, it's a concern. I validate that, but I don't think it's unrealistic.
Let me just, I mean, this is, this is false quantification, but you want to give me a probability that you will reopen within a, if, if this deal is struck and sticks, you will reopen within a year of that, that of it happening?
Our plan right now is to open in the fall of 2022.
Okay, all right. I did, it, it, it changes some of the complexion here if it turns out that it's a very tenuous uh thing that you would reopen.
We're continuing to plan for a fall opening. We're continuing our, to look at our refurbishing and reconstruction in some of our building areas for enhancements. That's going to continue, Commissioner, and we have every optimism that we will come to an agreement. Um, and, and we're hoping we can do that with the neighbors uh support, with the ANC's support in a way that we're all moving forward. So um, that's the best I can offer right now. I can't give you a probability, but I can give you a commitment that we're not going to give up in terms of our effort to, to reopen our school and continue with our mission.
All right, good, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, let me just add to um what Stephanie said. I just attended um on the trail, a meeting hosted by Salima Adolfo, and Salima Adolfo is an ANC commissioner in Ward Eight. And he um sponsored a forum on special education in DC. And it was packed with parents all across the city. Um, and I was in a breakout room with probably 10 other, maybe 10 to 15 other parents, and so he did it by breakout room. And uh, let me tell you something. If they reopen, which just seems like they will, there will be a great need. Parents um are not getting served in the school systems as they want. There are so many stories around this area, and um if you got a great system like ECC, um, they've been in business for a long time, complete different philosophy. I'm like, people are going to be knocking down the door, so I think they're going to be very successful. But there's a lot of need in this area, in this city, so I think they're going to be in good shape.
Thank you, Commissioner Gore. I, I think it's important. I'm, I'm sorry, go.
Well, I just think, I think that uh when we, when the commission came into this, one of the things we were going to try to do is uh be even-handed about how much time we devoted to each one. So I, I wanted to get this question in when ECC presented. I, I guess I asked whether um uh if we really ought to adjourn now, um, because you know, the, there's going to be an imbalance of time um and emphasis. And we did stray rather seriously on um the kind of discussion we thought we were going to have on um Friends of the Field, so uh, I don't know if the other, how the other commissioners feel.
Yes, I think we should adjourn.
Yeah.
But can I just say one thing, Randy, which is, in, in the chat, it seems that people are suggesting that the commissioners didn't take seriously or wasn't, weren't engaged in the substance of what the Friends of the Field slides um presented. And I, I want to say on, on my behalf, that's not, that's not true. I've looked carefully at those slides and I take seriously their, their concerns. Um, I didn't have questions about them because they were pretty self-evident. But why I raised and follow-up of Connie, the notion of the accusation was because it was false, and I just felt that the record needed to be cleared on it. But I take seriously the substance of what Friends of Field is saying, and it will factor seriously into my consideration as an individual sit, um commissioner, what decisions I make with respect to this proposal.
I agree. All right.
Randy, uh, I'd like to know if we're going to get all of the presentations. I think we, we should, will they be sent to us?
Yes, we'll do all of them.
Okay, all right, that's important. Yeah.
On our website.
I mean, I get the chat.
Okay, and the Q, hey, did somebody copy the Q and A, so we-
I did.
Great. Okay, thank you all. Appreciate it. Thank you, Stephanie. Thank all, all of the presenters. We appreciate it very much. Thank you.
And the attendees. Thank you.
Yes. Good night.
Thank you all.